Okay, everybody's here. We'll start the speech. Please stand for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. One nation, united in its individual liberties and justice.
This is him.
All right. Here we have no guests tonight, so I'm gonna move right along 3.01. This is the point in the meeting for comments on matters not already on the agenda. Comments on agenda items will be accepted when that item comes up during the meeting. Interested persons may also submit views in written form to the clerk or superintendent prior to the meeting, and those comments will be brought to attention with the board during the meeting. Do we have any correspondence or public participation? With that, we'll run into new business. Mr. O.
Okay, extracurriculars. Right?
Substitutes.
Substitutes. Okay, one down, two far. All right, I'd like to recommend for hire the following substitute for our district, Stacy Dunn.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Stacy Dunn for district substitute for the 24-25 school year. Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this, Adam? Any for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving right along. 4.02, which is sold.
I would like to recommend Angie Courier for Frank Ratt Middle School for wrestling assistant coach for the 24-25 school year.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Angie Courier for FBMS assistant wrestling coach for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to recommend Jody Jensen for Colster High School girls basketball assistant coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Jody Jensen CHS girls basketball assistant coach for the 24-25 school year. Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to recommend Trenton Ashley for Colster High School boys basketball assistant coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Trenton Ashley CHS boys assistant basketball coach for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any for the board? Tiff.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to nominate Asley Olmstead as Frank Ratt Middle School science club sponsor.
You can take those.
As well as Frank Ratt Middle School assistant play director.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Asley Olmstead for FBMS science club sponsor and FBMS assistant play director for the 24-25 school year. Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mr. O.
Okay, 4.03. We're recommending revision to policy 3TT5. Remove high school and middle school principals replaced with two appointed administrators for the board to consider for the Title I coordinators. Second reading. Second reading.
I move that the Colster Public School Board of Trustees approves the second reading of policy 3225 sexual harassment of employees. Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. 4.04. We're recommending the same revision, policy 5012. Remove high school and middle school principals replaced with two appointed administrators for the board to consider for Title I coordinators.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the second reading of policy 5012 sexual harassment of employees.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. Moving right along. 4.05. This was the drug testing?
Yeah. So we made changes to adjust it to the saliva test, and then any wording that we found that was referring more to the urine samples, you'll see those also were changed. So, kind of cleaned some of that up to make it fit saliva.
Okay.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the second reading of changes to policy 3551 and to procedure 3551P as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any for the board?
So after tonight, if this passes, we can start implementing saliva tests. And just as a note, our parent consent form did have both on it. So after this year, we might want to look at just putting that. Because it did list both.
There was one thing I don't know. She did share with us they cannot test. They don't cattle fail the test for making sure they can.
I also reached out to her and got the prices on the different, on the urine ones. And the urine ones are $75, and non-negative is an additional $60. So it is like a $10 or $12 savings with the saliva one. Just for.
Saliva will do so much better. You always have saliva.
We don't.
Unless you have cotton mouth, in which case we know what you're doing.
Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 4.06.
So obsolete inventory list for disposal FBMS wrestling mats.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the disposal of the obsolete inventory presented as per policy 7251 disposal of school district property without a vote. Second.
Motion second. Any public comment on this? Any for the board?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I wasn't quick enough. How's it gonna be disposed of for the minutes?
Don't.
Don't.
Don't. Okay. Gotcha.
Where they going?
Thank you.
That's mad.
Probably should be.
Wearing them. It's the next senior class.
As old as they are.
I was gonna say, do you have a bonfire celebration?
Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. All right, with that, we'll move into our work session.
Yeah. So Steve and I kind of worked with Terry over email, and Steve and I came up with a couple, well, like a wage tier we would like to present to the union for approval for the SPLA. When we did negotiations last time, we approved the position, but the actual state exam hadn't been approved yet. So that is approved. You can get that certification now. So after looking at what our current paras make and what the requirements for the SPLA were, we thought four tiers would be fair. One of the ways you can get your SLPA is passing the exam and having 690 hours of work under a licensed SLP. So that tier would start at 1910. We can have a certificate from the state of Montana from an accredited institution. So you can go get your certificate and pass that exam. That would be 2110 starting wage. You can have an associate's degree in speech language pathology, plus complete that exam, 2310. And then you can have a bachelor's degree in speech language pathology or communication sciences and disorders from an accredited institution and complete that exam for 2510. And then out-of-state applicants would follow the state regulations. They have to pass that exam, and then they would be placed depending on what their education level is, just like current state applicants would.
The second one?
Mm-hmm.
The 2110? Can you tell me what that was again? Sorry.
A certificate.
If you have that certificate?
Yes.
Okay. And they pass the exam?
Yes.
Okay.
I think what you put together additional puts it up a little bit more for applicants. So, great job.
Does anyone get the MOU?
Yep. Yep, so we do have a MOU that Terry put together based on those wages. And she said that if we are in agreement tonight, verbal agreement, she can take it to the union to be voted on before it comes to the next board meeting for approval. So, if everyone feels comfortable with those amounts, then she can present it to her union.
I think it's all reasonable.
I have a question. So do you get years of experience on that when you say you have the tiers for starting wage? Is there years of experience that can be brought in to the district, or how does that work?
Our classified doesn't have that.
The only person, not stuck up person, if anybody had any experience working as a speech therapist, there will be. In fact, someone has currently in the position for the wages. I would assume that if they were to take their certification, they would stay over here.
I don't think they would want to go back down.
Right. I just, I mean. I don't want to lose the one person we have because we currently have 690 minutes a week we have to see five kids for speech services, and those numbers are just growing. Like by Christmas, I, well, I'm probably safe to say we'll have another five more students. So I don't want to lose the one person if someone were to come in to have the wage, and then they would have to go back and pay if they were at the level here that they're at.
They don't have to go back and pay.
Mm-hmm.
We would never make someone go back and pay.
They would need the certification to over to that classification. They have the classification already, but they wouldn't. You can do it in the MOU or in this, as transferred, those events that have the authority to just transfer it to this.
Yeah, we discussed that. Stay in the same.
Okay.
So I guess would we like Terry to take it to her union?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
See if we can get somebody hired maybe before that happens on Christmas. We're running out of time. 5.02.
I kind of threw that on there just to have a discussion.
Right.
Because I've been hearing a lot about substitute T-shirts and how we're short. And so I just kind of wanted to brainstorm on what we could do scheduling-wise, or, I mean, we're still trying to bring in substitutes, but any recommendations would greatly help.
Where are we? I mean, across the district, or is it?
I think across the district, I'm pretty sure. Yeah. It's just a couple of our schools have more paras they can pull than others, which we don't want to keep doing that either. And then we also talked about possibly trying to hire a full-time substitute for each building, but I think that would come in as a para, and I don't think you have a substitute, a full-time substitute position. But if that person was placed as a para for each school, they would know, they would just have them to use as a substitute. So that was kind of an option that we've been talking about as well. And I know we talked about that last year.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
And I think, you know, when that was brought up, the school that it came from, they didn't have the CCA union, so that's why, I mean, for them, they have to go through a union to have a good position on board then. So this would be, yeah, it would have to be a para position. I mean, I think it's, I think that's a, that would be a good position to have because, I mean, where we're at, it's just almost nightly. I know someone really, really close to me that gets a call, so.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we could do like some more recruiting events for subs too, try to.
I have asked Ryan, he's working on a sub workshop.
Okay.
So, yeah. And we do have some possibilities right now that are just waiting.
Two more than a possible para.
Yeah. Got a couple more.
Good. What?
Just weren't ready tonight.
You mentioned scheduling. Do you have any thoughts on that? Just trying not to use teachers for subs, but then also looking at class periods, open class periods, teachers don't have very many students. Like going into the next semester, is there something we can do better with scheduling at that point?
Yeah.
To take the burden off of that a little bit? We couldn't really do it now because it's quarter, but it could be looked at at semester.
Okay.
You're right that there are some things that we can shore up on scheduling for next semester that should help, but I agree.
Do you guys have any one that's working in your guys' building that might help the other buildings?
Our paras are saving our life at this point. That's going really good. And we're coming up short even with that.
The Mayesville has two paras that are leaving the area to provide their needs and their care for a period. And so then when it comes back on the teachers, and like on Friday, there were five people, five people in the high school, and there were two subs. And so they came back from, they were people in prep, and then whoever's left there is in the office, which is like this week, I'm in the tech department, and so on Wednesday, there's three people down there, so Thursday, there's two people down there, so Sunday they have the office full of kids who are going to be getting an instruction.
Are we looking at? I know that there's a district policy that where there's only so many employees can be gone within the district. Are we looking at that too until we can get subs in? I mean, I don't want to tell anybody no, but at the same time, we do have to think about the kids and what their educational needs are.
I can answer some of that for certified. So we have, the personal lead can be restricted to six. Those in the order, there's different rules to follow with that.
Six within the district?
Within the district.
Okay.
Which, you know, we have talked about the concerns before, if like three different people are approving it, you know, it can be very easy to accidentally approve more once it's approved. You know, so that's always something that I think we've been pretty careful with this year, but principally, we do not restrict. We can't restrict on that. And then, you know, for, for our district, something that's come up at our union meetings a lot is that often we get told there's a lot of subs, but we need to keep in mind that some subs are only for certain areas. And sometimes someone knows about themselves, like, I love high school, but there is no way I'm going down to the elementary, and it might be opposite as well, or they might be willing to work only when their spouse is not working so that they don't have to have daycare or something. And so sometimes it's misleading sometimes looking at the sub list because it looks like it is really full and you have a lot of people to pull from, but in reality, we don't always have that chance just because of other people's schedules and what they're actually setting up for on their end. And I do know in our negotiations last time, we did discuss about that possible position to have someone. Once in the past, we did have a teaching position where they were hired as a teacher, and then they did follow, or filled in throughout the district as needed. That was a few years ago. And then Marietta has some data from the high school. Like Mr. Rayley said, the elementary, for the most part, were covered by our parents for the most part, and people just step it up some.
I have a running list every time we have to do in-house coverage of the high school, although I'm missing two from Friday. So there will be 32 instances on this running list, including the five from this week that we don't have subs for. And this is broken down in periods. I didn't break it down as to where is it during prep, or did we bring other students into our classes, which we've done. And then you can't get anything done because you have two different groups working on different things and distracting each other. So it disrupts our classes and the class that we're covering. And a lot of the high schools said no to get enough of our prep because we need our prep to be grading and to be prepping for classes, which leaves more things falling on the office. So students are just up there, and they have their assignments, but they don't work on it because they don't have instruction.
From the standpoint of last year, when I was doing Title I and stuff, you know, it was a hardship on our program when we had kids who had services that they were supposed to be assigned to try and, you know, keep them from falling back into that risky zone educationally, and then they're pulled, and they're pulled, and pulled, and then, you know, maybe one intervention out of a week where other groups are trying to fill in. So, you know, we, we know the issue is that we can't make people here, and we have to problem solve it, but I know that there are some definite hiccups, and everyone's trying to pitch in the best they can, do the best they can for kids for sure, but it does make it tricky for all.
I'm just gonna say, this is a hu, once again, human resource.
We've been fighting the last.
We have a few coals in the fire that hopefully will pan out for up here at the high school. If we can recruit more, that would be great, obviously. Alicia, you guys getting through with your paras and whatnot too?
We have five paras. There's a couple that we don't utilize, so because of the Title I programs and/or special education services. So basically, there's two to three that get pulled a lot to substitute, but I really like the thought that Serena was talking about, and potentially, we could work on something like this, and we've talked about this in the past, about having a substitute, you know, full-time basically for each school, because there's a lot of time that, you know, it's not daily, but it's quite often anymore when people will get sick. You know, that happened today, you know, again today, and/or doctor's appointments that get rescheduled, and there's an opening, someone's been trying to get in, what have you. But then, you know, it's an hour or two hours or whatever, and we just can't get a sub in, so then you're, you know, you're trying to shift things around. So, I don't know, I like that idea of having, you know, a substitute that's available, and how that would work other than a para, you know, maybe making that position new. Yeah, otherwise, we don't have the problems and the inconsistencies that the high school has, obviously. Our teachers haven't had to, you know, fill in on their prep, so they haven't had to double up classrooms yet.
We'll put it all together.
I would.
Oh, sorry. I was gonna ask, what's the biggest concern about subs?
Do you?
As far as?
As far as, I mean, I mean, for them to continue to come consistently or whatever.
Want them to come back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's their?
It's just their availability. I mean, the people that we have right now, it's hard. I mean, we have a gentleman that works full-time. We have a lot of people actually that work full-time jobs and come, like, they're either shifters, they're going towards a degree, so then they'll come in and they're available or spouse. So it depends on if their spouse is home to watch little ones at home. So that's, and just looking at the sub list that we have here now currently, you know, same thing with, there's had, there's another one that's had to help their dad out, you know, and stuff, so it's been limited, but now coming into the winter season, might be available more often. Yeah, just different family things that have come up, so. And our subs as well, so not just our staff, but our subs as well, so that's what stings too, so.
You said hopefully these, these pan out for the high school, and then we can focus on.
I'd like to hear more about the workshop once he gets that going. And then Terry, if we were to try to recruit one para for each building to be used as just like a sub, is that under, is that okay with the contract?
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe we could make sure those are posted and really push those, one for each building, and kind of specify exactly what it is, because.
Sorry, advertising that for three new.
One for each building.
In addition.
Yeah.
Anybody, like, somebody who's willing to do something like that, that's not necessarily his specialty, like doing special ed.
Right.
Especially if it's an everyday, all the time, you know, vacation, it's a great.
And you'd be doing something new every day, which would be really helpful, I think. So make sure to really push that. Okay. Well, we'll keep working on it and keep talking about it until we can.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have the other two, you know, cleared to go at the next board meeting and whatnot, and then hopefully then Robin also can get that, a para hired as well for high school, so.
So I don't think there's gonna be issues during basketball season, and we have, you know, three teachers that have purchased just the basketball, and they're all moving out this season.
And that was a lot of last week, I think, was activities.
Okay. Hard to getting into like basketball season since that's next semester, and so can we look at scheduling and stuff at the high school, just until we get somebody hired?
Yeah, we can't change anything. Quarter started today.
You know what I mean, for next semester?
Yes.
Yes, we're looking at that already.
Because if we have some teachers who are teaching one or two students, you know, that doesn't need to happen. That might free up, it could free up like three quarters of a teacher, possibly, for a few of the teachers, because I think we said before, seven was our.
Seven was our.
Number, unless it's like a high-level honors class where not many people are eligible for it. So we want to try to stick to higher numbers than, you know, single digits is kind of low. But that would free up more resources. Okay. I'd like to do that too. That way we can just utilize.
I think we have a good start in the high school right now, as long as everything falls through, like we're hoping it does.
What do you got for Wednesday? What do you got for Wednesday?
Right now, nothing.
I'm taking all of my children out on the district Thursday, so that'll create some.
I did have to say though, we got, we, our trouble spot is lunch, right? The way our lunches and getting para coverage and everything, and at one point this year, we were stuck. We didn't have coverage and put the word out, and my staff jumped up and volunteered like you can't believe and covered it and just came out of woodwork. It was pretty cool actually to see that, and people step up and say, hey, I'll do it out of, so. We have that to fall back on, we have to, you know, and worst case, that's like the last thing, we put it out, you know, and if anybody wanted to help out, so.
Well, it's like our drivers. We sure be interested in anybody wanting to take out some of those roles, so. And maybe like I said, as a full-time for a building, and then knowing I wouldn't be at the high school or at the middle school or at the elementary school on a daily.
Right.
I'm up to more interest, so.
I think that would make a difference.
I think you're right.
I think so, just because I heard a few people mention that, you know, like, getting the phone calls in the morning, or whatever. I mean, they're willing to do it, but I mean, just to know that, to know that they're in a particular building every day.
Yeah, they're just showing up. Okay. All right, with that, facilities.
So, we looked at doing the laminate floor instead of the carpet, so we didn't have to abate. That doesn't look like a feasible option. Nobody will lay it down, half the people won't sell to us with that, because it would void the warranty. That would be the big issue, is no warranty, not stowaway, and extra specs. So, uh, it's up to Missile Tool, and we're looking at doing the carpet, and those three rooms, again, for sure. And then, of course, in order to abate it, timing wise, they're gonna have to wait till summer, between the time they need, and the carpet people, they're just not good enough for it, in the year. And if we're gonna do that, we were wondering if we wanted to go ahead and do the full abatement for everything with the rooms we were looking at doing carpet with next summer.
That's total of about five, in total?
There would be five more rooms.
In addition to the three?
Yeah.
So eight total?
Yeah.
Right?
Four and a half. That one room's really long, so, yeah. But yeah, so it'd be eight total.
It probably saves us money if they come down once and do it.
Yep, and then, that's the other thing, is like, I talked with Andy, and he was saying, that's the other big thing, is how they set up everything for the abatement. Like, if they did those three rooms, and they had each one sealed off, that's three different air tests we have to pay for. Or you can do one big tent that does all three of them, and one air test, so that saves a bunch of money. So if we do it in summer, we'd have one air test for that wing, and one air test for the other. Uh, in the end, would save us quite a bit of money.
Just makes sense for you to do it all at once.
It's gonna have to be done at some point, eventually, so.
And it was like, uh, I'm sure it'll blow up by summer, and it was, but like, for all eight rooms was just under the thirty-four thousand for the abatement.
With the abatement?
That's the abatement.
Just for the abatement, okay.
And I think we were at, like, twenty-four thousand total-ish for all eight rooms for the carpet.
Lock them in right now, Robert.
That's what I would do.
Oh, let's take the price.
You can take both of those two separate, right? And we don't, you don't need to come back for board approval for that, Scott can take care of that, so.
So thirty, thirty-four thousand for the abatement, twenty-four thousand roughly for the carpet, for all, for all eight rooms.
Yeah. And that would get both years, so.
Yep. I think we should do it at one time.
Yeah, I agree.
We're just bugging along and getting ready for winter, so. I think I'm here.
I did have, uh, I did have one thing, I asked Steve about the, uh, the stage four, um, and I don't, did you, was Robyn able to get back to you? I swear, I got back to me, I, I don't know if they ever, they, I don't know if they looked at it either, when they were here.
Because I was gone when they were here. They, I don't remember.
Yeah. So we, we probably just need to have them come down and look at it. Who's calling for that room again?
Which one was it?
High school.
It was the.
I mean, which company?
The Western Flooring, or whatever.
Was it installed?
Yeah.
They're on the way home.
Yeah, they are on the way home.
I don't know if they actually looked at it, because I never got anything from them. Like, when you asked me that day, it's like, yeah, you're right, I didn't see anything, and Robin didn't say anything either, so. But we looked at a couple other options with Trey, too.
Yeah.
Just, uh, going over the top of it.
Yeah, or you were profited.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I did, I couldn't remember if they had the same thing, or, or if they were gonna quote the same thing, or if they were gonna quote.
I think Western Floor wanted to come in and strip, just redo it. And I think the last conversation Robert and I had was, if we just went over the top of it, it would probably be.
Yeah.
A lot cheaper than.
Yeah, Trey found some pads that laid out, I guess, kind of probably like laminate that, once the front gets wore out, you can swap it out in the back.
Move it, yes.
Double the life out of it.
In your spare time. Okay. Thank you, Robert. Translation? I think we all know where we are, so.
Uh, one thing we did talk about was opening up driving light classes and having, offering that to staff members, who would be interested in driving, which is to increase the few, of people that are, you know, potentially able to do it, so.
Are there, I was, it was brought up to me, are we reaching out on any of the other medias that aren't our Facebook, or the PTO? Somebody that's maybe not even paying attention to what the schools are doing, other than our signs hanging on the fence?
I think Miles City Job Service would be a good place to have any of the classified positions, really.
Right.
We have the, the other temp service or something here?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we can re, just put some stuff out there, too?
I think Brian should, would be the one to do that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, Brian, yeah, yeah. Just to get it out there a little bit more.
Have we ran an ad in the paper, in the Wordhead Papers, for, translation, or just that we are hiring?
Not that I know of.
Not that I know of.
We have, I don't heard.
Yeah. Some of the avenues that we're looking for teachers aren't the same.
Right.
Places we would look for.
Right.
Best chargers.
Best chargers.
We're looking fires up at the, the mine, and the plant.
I've talked to a lot of those people. I get the same answer a lot.
Probably in all the hump magazines, and you have stairs coming from the south.
There you go, right?
How was everything on last Wednesday?
Uh, ninety-nine point nine percent flawless. Worked, it worked. Did lose any kids, or did?
Well, they know now, though.
A little confusion, but nothing to worry about, really.
And then, and kudos to the, to the building principals and their staffs for getting those kids lined up to where they needed to be. That helped me get a lot easier, so.
You just snap them.
Um, do you want to do, want us to do our quick updates of our facilities tours? Because we still haven't done, just a quick overview.
Yeah.
Since it's more session?
Yeah, all right.
Okay, mine was at the high school.
Yeah, mine, mine, it's in your shop.
Um, and the first thing we went to was the shop, so we had the paint room ventilation, that's been on our list for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Still hasn't been fixed. Um, and then that transition strip to the cafeteria, which we were talking about last year, too. I don't know if there's been any, so hard from, to go from that tile.
I've looked at some things, and I've found something that maybe would work, but the feeling I don't like is it's not a holding. But that can be sections, so it might won't be over time.
Is it cheap enough to fix the walkie every three years?
Probably the cheapest way we could do it.
Okay.
Sure, tearing out the floor.
Um, and then she was going through obsolete, the shop obsolete stuff. Oh, and then I recommended, maybe when we obsolete stuff that's not leaving the facility right away, we can have some obsolete stickers, we can put on there, and we can just say, obsolete it this date. That way, we're not coming through everything again, and then saying, oh, did we obsolete that? So, I don't know, they'd probably have to be like, good equipment stickers, but I think that would save a lot of headache.
You just don't put like a small piece of paper on, just taped on, it would like, it would disappear all the time.
Yeah, we need like a metal sticker, something that's, or something that we can always, we can reference that won't stay with that piece of equipment. I think that would be a good idea, um. Oh, drinking fountains in all the schools. I think some of them don't work, some of them have hot water, and some of them work, so that would be, if all the schools' drinking fountains could be looked at and make sure they're working.
We do, I currently use.
Okay. And, um, Robin had carpet in the library she wanted replaced eventually, and the sped downstairs room. And then she wanted to try to find a way to get rid of that orange in the library, and she thought she could maybe even paint those fabric panels that go around the up top.
Yeah.
Because the orange kind of looks dated. Um, and then the bathrooms, I don't know if, especially the ones across from the gym, I know they got repainted, but like, on the girls, the little, what used to be the lock is open, so someone shoves toilet paper in there, so you can't see through the hole. And the kids have already peeled all that new paint off, because it was so thick. I just, I really wished we could have that looking nicer before divisional volleyball, when we have a bunch of traffic in there. So I know at one point, we talked about replacing those panels completely, and we can do that as long as we don't change things around. Um, because we kind of got to a standstill on the bathroom remodel. And if we have the bathrooms open over by the concession stand, there's plenty of bathrooms, two of them. But I just wish the ones in the front were a little more presentable.
And those are the ones that people are gonna, are gonna go through.
And you can't shut the door, because it's just open, right? Yeah, so unfortunately, you can't close them up and send them to the concession stand, because it's just open. So, if you could look at this within two weeks.
Blowing my nuts.
I was kind of, with Alicia, I mean, I know what we need to have done there, we're working on those, those rooms for the carpeting. Wasn't too worried about that, the water fountains, for sure. Door twelve, that one's.
Door twelve.
Good to go for now, and that'll be redone in the spring with concrete. And then, um, he's still wanting to move that ramp. For the activities entrance, too, so we'll, we'll stay on that. I mean, I know there's more, but I think those are your, trying to hit your.
Top priorities right now.
So.
The rest.
Yeah.
Just keep putting that stuff in case.
Yeah.
It's awesome, we got new benches set today, so kudos to, you know, the maintenance, kind of even taking those little ones out before the ground got frozen, and getting the new ones in, so they're gonna work you hard to get some of those things done.
Kind of look at it, it's home.
Yeah, we're starting, yeah, we're, just I cannot believe.
Some of the things that, I had questions on, and I know that I talked to Robert a lot about it, and it's just time, and it was time-consuming, but like, the shop area that has the, um, it's not obsolete and stuff, it's actually dump stuff, you know, it's no good. But it just needs to get cleared out, the dumps, eventually, and we get cleared out to go to the top.
Right.
But, um, just because my shop teacher's in there this year now, and wanting to, you know, utilize that entire space, you know, and then there's still some doors that we have ordered from last year that needs to be hung for the auditorium. Those are still there, and I really worry about those. Those were the flood week last year, and I hope it didn't work. The door is too bad, because those are nice, expensive doors.
Those, the big ones did get damaged, it was, once we got the new carpet.
That's awesome, right, so they just have to, just things like that, little things like that, still, but, um. Yeah, like, if you walk to any, like, we have blinds that are ready to go, we organize blinds for all the classrooms, for safety purposes, for lockdowns, so those are ready to be hung as well, so, yeah, it's coming together.
Make some strides, anyway.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I did Pine View. Um, we had a really good tour. Immediate needs for Pine View right now are the washer and dryer setup. Um, the washer needs proper drainage, and the dryer vent is like blowing up the lint up the wall and not out. And that's a, that can be a fire danger, so we really need to get that taken care of. Um, another immediate need is storage. They need some storage, um, especially with getting new, um, teachers down there. We're utilizing those classrooms, which is great, and, but I know that Mr. Bailey has items that are, he actually moved out of storage to put in Cory kindergarten teacher, and so we don't want to get rid of those things, but we need a place to put them. So that would be an immediate need for, for Pine View. Long-term, we need to look at something, um, for the pickup and drop-off area. And then, we really need to get the sand out of the playground. It's just a mess for the teachers, it's a mess for the kids, it's, it's a mess. Um, so we need to, we need to really look at that this summer, getting, getting that sand out of there. But the, the dryer vent, we really should look at, like, right now. We really need that looked at now. And, and the.
Set up to have a washer and dryer, and then just throw one in there, whatever, that's how it's gonna go.
Um, I don't think it's super hard to, like, knock a hole in the side and dent the dryer.
Can it go outside?
It needs to.
From where it's at?
No, we, it'd have to be moved. It has to move to the other side.
Okay. Take a look at it.
I think we could put it by the, closer to the door.
So I'm gonna just run dryer down the crosser.
Or run dryer vent across.
Hose all the way through there, that's cheap, even if it gets plugged, you can just tear it out and put it in, or blow it all out, too.
Mm-hmm.
So.
That might be the better option, is to run dryer hose. Mm-hmm, it's not, it's not difficult to just take the hose off. Mm-hmm, right, and then some.
And we had talked about conics boxes for that school, actually.
Yes.
Okay, because to be the storage, since there's no more rooms, and then you can have it close. But I don't know if anyone checked into pricing on that, or how much.
I don't know what those are going for these days, those big conics is. The only other thing on facilities is, I'm looking at my calendar, our regular board meetings, next month is on the fourth, correct? Or is it the eleventh?
The eleventh. It's on the eleventh.
Did you see the eleventh?
Yeah, eleventh and twenty-fifth.
Okay. That's right, sorry. Eleventh and twenty-fifth. Uh, I want to schedule that special meeting with the community to discuss.
Sports facility.
Sports facility, if they want us to go ahead and proceed with.
When are we doing that meeting? You want it on that eleventh?
No.
No. You want it totally.
I just want it out there, I want it separate, completely separate, so I just want, um, Mr. Resold, Scott, uh, administration, and that's just a kind of piece that might, I'm not saying it has to be the fourth, the week of the fourth. It can be the week of the eleventh, I don't want it on that Monday, uh, on a regular meeting. But, um, yeah. So that first two weeks in November, I think we need to have that.
Are we gonna have the, the architect in on that, too?
We don't need to, what we need to do is just decide that we have enough support to.
To go forward.
Go forward.
Okay.
We've reached out to the architects and whatnot, we have enough of that.
Okay.
To choose from, if.
We have community.
And community backing.
Will we send a survey out before that meeting?
Absolutely.
And then review the result, results, just asking, yeah.
Yep, if we could get that done.
That would be great to have it.
That would be great.
Before the next meeting.
Mm-hmm, if we could get it out, that survey out, you know, this week, uh, the week of the fourth.
What would we want to ask them?
So the week of the fourth is also the divisional volleyball fair.
Yeah. Just, just survey though. Just something we can send, send out.
We're not gonna do the.
So you're not, you're not gonna do the touring of the people going.
No.
No.
Alright.
No. I just want that.
I think the 18th would probably be good. It's Monday.
That's fine.
Keep that in mind and we'll.
Yep.
Okay, what do we want to ask them? Cause I can work with Evan to build the survey.
So, hold on real quick. Are we doing, gonna have the, the meeting here in the boardroom or are we gonna have it somewhere else?
I would hope we'd have enough community involvement. We'd have to use the auditorium.
That's what I was hoping.
The 18th and 19th are district honor ban.
It, it doesn't have to be Monday or Tuesday. It could be Wednesday, Thursday. It could be on a Friday.
That's fine. I just want to let you know.
I said, I just want, I want it out there plenty of time. I think we need buy-in big time before we. Cause I think just the, just the designing could cost up to six figures and I don't want to spend six figures.
No.
On design. We don't have a community backing for.
And I'd like to see a soccer suffer because.
So.
So on a, on a regional basis, uh, we were in our, we were in the all conference 80s meeting for volleyball today. And the 80s in our conference actually expressed an interest in having this track up and running. Because they would like to be able to hold events here as somewhere, you know, somewhere else for them to hold events. So that, you know, so it's, it's not something that's just a culture issue. Um, and it's not a huge amount of money that we'd be able to pull in.
I was about to say, I'm not sure that they're, they're wanting us to host one will, will cover $10 million for.
No, but, no, and that's, and that's understood, you know. But also it is something that would draw people to the community and have them dropping money into businesses and, and into the community. That would help to sell that to the community as, you know, as something, you know, as, as a draw to come here for them. Uh, the other thing is the, the, the 80s organization. Again, it's not a huge pot of money, but they do have money to help schools with track improvement that are in there. That are in the, the region. So we can bring something to them saying, hey, what could you guys pitch in for us? So we could also be a hosting facility. So, yeah.
So if you work with Evan on that survey.
Yeah, what do we want to know?
Really just that.
I mean, it's a straightforward, would you support a levy to, I think.
Yep.
A levy? Or, or, yeah, to fund a $10 million.
Possible, whatever, we don't know that, yeah.
Right, that's.
Partially, partially.
Bakers was four and a half, I think is what that thing said. So I would double that, eight mil, nine million?
And Scott's already reached out to architects and designers. We, we have it between McKinstry and SDI and everybody else.
Brittany.
Do you have the information to put out to the public on how much it would cost?
That's exactly what.
See, that's, that's the problem, right? I don't, I don't know if I want, if this board wants to go ahead and spend upwards of six figures just to get that.
Design.
Design in amount.
Are you talking about that or are you talking about the, how much the taxes would go up?
That, I just feel like we're going to have to have something that's attached to that before you put out a survey and then who wants it? Of course we want it, but I mean, what does it kind of cost?
Right. I think what we do is we, we try to fill maybe to the higher side of that, right? Say.
I think you'd have to have that when you have this public community meeting, like this is what it looks like. This is an estimated amount. This is what it would cost if you.
I can give you those numbers just like we do on a ballot.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Can we put it, can you write it as that it would hopefully be matching funds that we're gonna pursue like cohort grant or something?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're gonna try that, but we have to err on the side of not having any of that.
Right, but I mean, just to tell them that we're going to try to do this.
I think we would tell them that in the meeting.
I think we were, didn't we talk about a percentage that we would need to see from the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, when we went into the cohort, it was, they, they liked, they approved the, the projects that had a, you know, a buy-in from, from the public. Um, whether it was, you know, 20% or whatever, you know, 50%. So, yeah, they, they did like.
Are you levying this? Are you bonding this or what?
So it depends on how much outside funding we could get. We want to levy as little as possible. Um, and we have a lot of resources we can go to. Just can't start going there until we have a plan. And we don't know if the public wants us to spend that much money to get.
We're looking for the buy-in, basically is what we're doing.
Cause they have to understand that it's gonna cost six figures just to get the architecture designs and then.
Very well.
Then what? Then if you don't go with it, then you're down.
Right, we could have.
Hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, whatever.
There's a lot of stuff we could do with.
With that money.
With that money.
It's a lot of money.
So.
Yeah, you know, looking at the deferred maintenance list, I'm sure that's going to come up, you know, in these meetings too. When you were looking at your deferred maintenance list that is exceedingly, you know.
Yep.
Yep.
Huge amounts. I mean, we're almost like putting a par for the horse in some incidents here. You know, I'm sure I'm just being.
No, I, I get.
You know, I mean, that's, I know that's what's going to be said because it's already being said. You know, why aren't we looking at the projects that's being built and why aren't we showing up hard for our maintenance first? Those kind of items, you know, why are you wanting to have levies passed upon levies when we have? I think you know what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Let's hope we don't want to move forward until we hear from people.
Absolutely.
Makes sense.
Yeah, cause you also, cause you know, you also hear, why can't we get us a track? Why don't we have track, you know, why don't we have this? So, yeah, people want everything and, you know, and again.
And I think all of that would be explained in that meeting. We would lay all of that out and then.
So should we have the meeting before we do the survey? To explain some of that first?
Yeah, we could. Seems like you should, I mean, because like all these things are already coming to play. How could I answer that? Of course we want that, you know, of course we want to see what's best. We want to have this big elaborate stadium or whatever. But at the same time, what does that mean for me as a taxpayer? What does that mean for me if I'm looking at my deferred maintenance list? I mean, I, those are questions that I just have sitting here.
Yep.
You know, so I, I think maybe you could have enough.
I'm open to that too. Like I said, I just, we need to get it out, we need to get it out there. Cause we have, we have designers that are, yeah, I've got some. Getting after Scott, are we doing this? What are you guys doing? What are you doing? But I keep telling them, I'm not willing to do anything unless we have public opinion on our side.
Is there a design firm that can give rough estimates?
They all can. They all.
Scavengers within the area, cause I, cause I think too that would be helpful. Like, I mean, me as a, a parent coming, I'm gonna say, yeah, we need sports facilities that kids can play safe on. Um, but I understand that you need to do more investigation to get a firm ballpark. But if it was something like, you know, uh, $2 million, maybe I would go for it. But if designers come back and say, listen, in your area, you're looking at minimum $7 million. I might say, shoot, maybe we just need to level that and just fix the field. And maybe I wouldn't get buy-in if it's over a certain.
And those are options. Those are options.
But maybe that can be helpful is get some.
I think Tyler already has some, has already done designs. You know, could follow back on him. Who we're already under contract, under contract with anyway. He could give us some, you know, rough.
When does that contract end?
Numbers.
We kind of looked at that and we were just talking about that the other day. I didn't think we were.
Are we, are we not under contract with the market?
I don't think so. I didn't find anything that stated that we were. So.
Either way though, um, he's already got it. I mean, he's one that we could pull back on because we've done some work with him in the past anyway. So just to get some of those numbers to present, possibly.
And I think there's, there is some rough plans in there from McKinstry before all of our time.
Yeah.
But I think they're back in the, in the minutes somewhere. There's some digging for that too.
So like I said, keep that in mind. I'm open to whatever. I've gone that hole last week in November. Other than that, I'm open. So. And I think we're under enough pressure to answer some of these questions, then I'd like to get it out there as soon as possible. So, alright. What's that? Technology?
What do we want to send a date?
Uh, I, you, I don't need a date right now tonight, but I'd like to see one maybe by the end of the week from Scott.
On the 20th, everybody. 20th, 21st somewhere there.
That third week. Yeah, any of those work for me.
I think me too. See what, I don't know, if we're having guests that night, see what they have available.
Cause it'll take us a little bit of time to just even figure out some of these designs or some of the stuff from McKinstry that we had in the past. And some rough numbers, I know we can't solicit them right away, but even, was it SDI?
SDI is interested.
Yeah, they could probably give us some just ballpark.
Pushing out of those.
Yeah, so, okay.
And they, they all say kind of the same thing too, uh, what do you want? You know, you get track, football field, stadium, restrooms, concession stands. I mean, so it's kind of a, ooh, what kind do you want? You know, so money is, I mean, you heard from SDI, I think that's probably the closest we've heard of amounts, you know, that night, so.
I think we can get enough information to kind of ballpark those options, right?
Well, I think, I mean, once, once we have, I mean, this can even come out in my meeting too is, um, you know, the first step is, is go for design. And, and once we have, you know, somebody on board or at least a, a contract or, or at least an RFQ. That, that shows, you know, a, a price, we can take that to the cohort and say, okay. You know, we're, we're willing to pay for, you know, 20% of this, we're willing to pay 30% of that. And, uh, and use that and then go to the next step. I mean, it, it's, there's just gonna be so many steps in this that it's.
It's gonna take time.
It, it's gonna be, you know, a hundred thousand here and then a million there. And then, you know, I mean, it's, it's just gonna be, there's gonna be quite a few steps if, I think. It's, it's hard to, to take this all in one bite.
I agree. So I just want that. What's that?
I've learned that from talking to you guys.
That worked?
And the big question is, what's the future of culture? And I think that's gonna determine what we're willing to bear. You know, what's gonna happen here? Is that gonna close down or is, is mine gonna close down? What is gonna happen if this happens? When that question is answered, I think a lot of these other questions will be answered as well.
Alright, we have a couple more. We gotta get a couple more things. Technology board, Evan?
Yeah, I've got an update for you. I've been talking with, uh, working with a different door security company. So for a long time, we've been using long company, that's just the name long, uh, for door security. Uh, we don't have any current support contracts with them. It's just kind of a call as you need, but they've been unable to get here. Just due to staffing shortage that they have. So, uh, three weeks ago I reached out to the plant to ask what company they're using. And they're using security management solutions out of buildings. I talked with the owner of SMS, they go by, and he's already visited the site and took a look at three doors that we've been having continuing problems with. And our high priority doors here at the, uh, high school, the external entrance. Uh, the fog reader has been working for two months. Um, the door itself opens and closes on schedule, but nobody can follow in to do it. Um, the activities entrance said it gets stuck often and people think it's locked. And then the pool entrance is kind of just sporadic with some of the internal wiring for that. But cool news is, is I talked with the owner three weeks ago and last week on Thursday, we had a repair technician here and he fixed all three doors. Um, the pool entrance might still have some issues because he didn't have all the tools to look at that one. It's a special door. Um, but all that said, is they responded very quickly. They're coming out of buildings. They had, they run the door readers for the plant and the mine and they do some security for the clinic. So they're already in town and they're here all the time for the bigger customers. And the benefit is that if we schedule, uh, work with them, if we continue with them, because we've just done a one-time, uh, repair so far. If we schedule work with them and we time it to when they're coming into town with, uh, to help the plant or mine and work on those. And they split the travel costs between the customers. So it's, um, a good opportunity for us because we don't meet somebody all the time. Um, all that said, is we have those three doors fixed and I've been talking with Scott and I want to reach out to SMS. And get a, uh, just proposal for a service contract with them. Cause we haven't had anybody, our professional group, look at our door readers, I think for like maybe at least two years. Uh, since before I started, maybe a little bit longer than that, uh, just because we have never had the contract. So there's things in our, uh, door security that needs to be upgraded in terms of, uh, software. And just have somebody come out and look at our readers and make sure our equipment is updated. So I'm talking with them and that's just, you'll get more information on that if we decide to go with that group work through Scott.
Along with you talking with them, I would like to see, I have a concern with the amount of fobs that are out there. Uh, keys that are missing. All that in general. I would like to see maybe what they can do to rebump what we have. So we can start fresh with fobs, keys, right?
So with keys, are you talking about the physical, like the master key?
The, the, the master keys and whatnot. Even I as a board trustee feel like I don't know why I need access to every door in this district. You know what I mean?
Yeah, and, uh, that's what the other says is.
We've had enough turnaround. That I, I'm just, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of fobs and whatnot out there. But I think it's something we should look at anyway. Just to clean that up. I know the plant did that a few years ago with just badges alone and it was ridiculous, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to it. And I like the questions he was asking me when I was telling him what issues we currently have, just real, like surface level issues. And he just said, yeah, it'd be beneficial for you guys to have, for the district to have a security management company come in. And just do a whole look at the system and give recommendations on. Cause AC mentioned that we have a lot of different, um, technologies for different parts of building security. Like the fire alarm, fire alarms or the fog system and the cameras or all these other things. And he, he said that that's what we do. We integrate all those things so that all that stuff could be controlled from a central location. Now that's more, that, it's not necessarily something we can do at this time just through a cost. But he was just walking around and saying, yeah, we work with that system. Yeah, we probably integrate that system. And it was kind of along those lines of how can we reduce the amount of physical keys or badge entries that we give? Or even pin numbers that we have to give out. And so he's interested to look at that and it's just about our price, what do you want to do to start? But I told him that at least we need somebody to fix the doors that we have. And we need somebody that we can call upon and expect, you know, within two weeks to come down and deal with it. And they nailed that. I mean, they've lost, they've got those three doors fixed. I'll get more information and send it to Scott for.
Please do. Alright, and with that. Thank you for the one.
Okay. So a little discussion time now on our change, um, proposal to our district enrollment for non-resident students. Kind of looking at some dates here and changing them to Friday, March 7th. The applications would be due. And then administrative review, the 21st, which is a PDW day. And then approve or deny the board meeting on April 14th, um, for a special meeting. And some of the reason why, um, this gives parents a chance to plan based on what happened with the kiddos. Um, from outer districts and us two in districts. And then we, um, well, that was one of the biggest things. And I guess for us all to be here too, as far as when all that's going on, it went on later last year in the school year. So we wanted to move it up. Uh, we don't want to move it too early, just then kind of looked at that, um, too early. You know, kind of, uh, there's some, there's some requirements in there. So we want to make sure that, uh, you know, all of those things, you've got to look at the, the, the students and those, those things. From truancies to explosions to the suspensions and that, so we have a full picture of those kids too. So that's what we are proposing to do. And then kind of look into that policy and clean some of that up and, and align it, I guess.
So they would be due roughly around the 7th, right? And then they would go to admin review when?
Got the 21st right now.
Of March?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then board of purple?
14.
Okay.
That's our regular.
On 4/14. Okay, gotcha. Okay. I just couldn't wait.
That's right. At least a month afterwards to.
Yeah.
The letters, Chris State last summer, I think everybody kind of knew was, it was new policy, state statute.
Yeah, it was new.
Things kind of came late, so just moving it up.
You gotta do them a lot of, when they receive, when you receive it. You gotta, you know, let them know that you received it. You could do that.
You could do that via email or whatnot and then they'll send them a letter. We're letting them know when you're gonna hold the board meeting for the review. So then they could have an opportunity to be here or not, so. So it felt like that was a little bit.
Our deadline now is for applications to be received is what?
Right now is June 15th.
And everybody's going.
Yeah.
Well, mostly leaving, okay.
Can you talk about scheduling earlier, too? This will help.
Absolutely. Yeah, and your strategic plan, your, you know, limits and whatnot, so that we know if we need teachers or.
And then the Niles went out in the middle of the summer and nobody was back in the building until August 1st. And you come back in and there's 15 messages that they needed their transcripts and everything sent weeks ago. I think, you know, because they were denied and they're trying to find them in the papers.
They would have to go to the other district if they were gonna go to another out of district to their board. And so we ran into a lot of that.
Yeah, I think if you want to redline that and bring it back at the next meeting, because it'll take two readings.
Thoughts on dates for you guys? I don't see, I mean, as far as a good time. It was a little early. March seems early.
Somebody's just, you know, January.
Just seems early for a good picture, but I mean, it's doable.
It's tough, change is hard, but sometimes.
Yeah, I reached out to a few schools. They were February 16th, January 31st, a couple of them were. You know, the, yeah, they were the bigger schools, too, as well, but I didn't reach out to hear.
I think as long as we communicate it out there. That's.
That's the big.
That's the key.
Yep.
So we gotta get this done so we can get that communicated.
And all current out of district students get this mailed to their home.
Correct.
So their application will be delivered to them.
Yep.
So that's good.
Yep.